Good evening. Welcome to the regular session of the Board of Public Utilities meeting. We'd like to welcome everybody who's here with us in person tonight. And those viewing or listening online. Obviously, the, as has been the tradition since the pandemic, the meeting is being recorded by both video and audio. I guess we didn't do video during the pandemic, but so now we are. All right, during, we all know we have a public comment section during the public comment section. On the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the board will be asked to provide their name, address, and have five minutes to speak. If you are here in the room and you would like to speak, please use the signup sheet over on Kaylee's table over there desk. And if you are online and you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature at the bottom of the Zoom app or signal that you would like to address the board during the public comment section. If you are connected by phone only, please press star nine if you would like to participate in the public comment section. As stated earlier, comments are limited to five minutes and should be directed to the board itself. As these comments are public, we caution visitors not to disclose confidential account information or to disclose account information on an account that is not in your name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history during an open meeting for the same reasons. This is those is that is considered confidential information. As always, you all may call or email the BPU with any concerns. The agenda for tonight's meeting may be found on the BPU website. If you are joining us via Zoom, it will appear on your screen. My name is Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member at Large, Position Number Three and current Board President. Other members of our board and staff include Bill Johnson, General Manager, David Haley, Member at Large, Position Two, Tom Groneman, Second District and current Board Vice President, Ab Mylan, First District and current Board Secretary, Jeff Bryant, Third District, Mary Gonzalez, Member at Large, Position Number One, and Angela Lawson in her new role as Acting Chief Counsel for the Unified Government. Reminder, please put your phones on silent. Also be aware that the microphones around the room are extremely sensitive and they can pick up and record comments from anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, I'd ask you to join me in the reciting the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States. Angela, may I get a roll call, please?
Roll call. Haley?
Present.
Mylan?
You.
Mulvaney Henry?
Here.
Bryant?
Here.
Gonzalez?
Here.
Groneman?
Present.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. Before I ask for approval of tonight's agenda, I'll ask if there are any comments, suggestions, corrections, edits that need to be made to it.
Move to approve.
My second.
The motion to approve tonight's agenda has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley?
Hi.
Mylan?
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Groneman?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for approval of the minutes of the work session of June 7, 2023, I will ask if there are any edits, comments, corrections, suggestions, changes that need to be made.
Move to approve the minutes of the work session of June 7.
A second.
The motion to approve the minutes of the work session of June 7, 2023 has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley?
Hi.
Mylan?
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Groneman?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Before I ask for approval of the minutes of the regular session of June 7, 2023, I will ask if there are any changes, corrections, additions, et cetera, that need to be made?
Well, second.
The approve, the motion to approve the minutes of the regular session of June 7, 2023 has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley?
Hi.
Mylan?
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
Bryant?
Hi.
Mary, excuse me, Gonzalez?
Hi.
Groneman?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Johnson, I believe the meeting is yours.
All right. Thank you, Madam President. Haley, is there anyone? Sign up. Okay, thank you. Rob?
Yes, sir. I have one person. Brian, I'm allowing you to pick them up.
All right.
Yeah, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, could you state your name and address again for the record, please?
All right, sure. My name is Ryan McCarron, 3730 Metropolitan Avenue, and I am with Clean Air Now, a community organization. I just wanted to check in and follow up with you after our conversation two weeks ago, let you know that we have reached out to the UG about what we had been asking for, and I sent out another email today, I think, which included both all UG Commissioners, the Mayor, and all of the board members where we reemphasize that we think, we believe that for the community, for the betterment of the community, a serious discussion should be happening on fixing the issues, I would say, between the UG and the BPU, and I just wanted to let you guys know that we are doing our part and wanted to see if there's anything new on your side. I know you told us last time that there's a meeting to be planned with the UG and potential discussions on a variety of issues. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, Mr. McCarron. I'm not sure if I'm saying your last name correctly, even though you just said it, so my apologies if I did not.
That's correct. You got it.
Okay, good deal. Uh, currently, there is a meeting scheduled between the full Board of Public Utilities, Board of Directors, and Unified Government Commissioners. I believe our General Manager and the Mayor for July 13. I believe that is a special session that is being set. Is that correct, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, yes, it is. From my understanding, that meeting will take place at 5 o'clock on the fifth floor at City Hall.
All right. Perfect. And like, just to double check, and this is open to the public, so we can potentially be there and listen in?
I will defer to the Acting Chief Counsel, but I believe that meeting would have to be open to the public, sir.
That's correct.
Thank you.
You bet. Thank you, Mr. McCarron.
Thank you.
Rob, is there anyone else signing up? Okay. So not having anybody, anyone else sign up to speak, we'll go ahead and move into the next session, which is General Manager Staff Reports. First, I'll ask Lori to come up for our April 2023 financials. She also have some previous financials she'll be asking for approval on.
Good evening. So go over the April 2023 financials, be presenting them as not preliminary, but actual, since we have completed our audit. So to start out with, this is looking at our build usage on the electric side. So overall, all of our categories are pretty comparable to where we were in 2022 as far as electric usage. So we're just about less than 1% above our 22 levels. Residential's down about 1% and commercial's up 2%, while industrial is up about 1%. On the water side, looking at our water usage and CCFs, we're about 1.6% above 2022 levels. Still pretty comparable. We do see an increase in residential as well as commercial. Both, both of those are up 2%, while industrial is down less than 1%. From the revenue side, we show revenue up over 2022 by about 10.2% or about 2 and 1/2 million. From a budget to actual perspective, we're down about 1.7% or about 450,000. 265,000 of that is electric, while 185,000 of that is water. So electrics down 1%, waters down about 5%, and on a combined basis, just under 2%. Looking at our revenues from a year-to-date perspective, in comparison to 2022, we're about 8% above 2022, which represents about 8.8 million. From a budget to actual, we're up about 3.8% or 4.3 million. 4.4 million of that on the electric side and about 78,000 on the water side. Some of the residential or the customer categories, so residential's down about 300,000. We're seeing commercial up 3 and 1/2 million as well as industrials up about 900,000, our schools are about 450,000. And our wholesale sales are down about 980,000. So overall, up 5% for the electric side. Water's down about 1%. Residential and commercial are, are up about 100,000 each. Industrial's down slightly, about 18,000, while wholesale's down about 52,000. Looking at our operating expenses, we're up over 2022 of April by about 16 and 1/2% or about 3 and 1/2 million. Compared to budget, we're up slightly about 1.9 million or 8.3%. Our electrics up overall about 2 million for the month of April, while water's down about 150,000. So electrics up about 10%, while water's down about 5%. We're continuing to amortize our 2022 under recovery of our ERC, and so that represents about 2.4 million each month. So we have two more months to go. Year-to-date, looking at in comparison to last year, we're about 14% above last year's with about 11.2 million of that electric and about 500,000 water. And from a budget perspective, we're up about 1.5 million. So electrics up about 3%, waters down about 7%. So on a combined basis, we're up about 2%. This looks at our operating expenses, again, just taking out depreciation for our true operating expenses. Overall, we're about 14 and 1/2% above 2022 levels. We're 1.7% above budget, electric being about 2.3% or 2.3 million of that, and water is down about 900,000. Some of the variances on the electric side, so we have purchased power, which is up about 2.1 million. Our fuel is down about 7 million, while production is down a million, and our TND is down almost a million. And our general and administrative is down about 600,000. And on the water side, all their expense categories are below budget. Production about 500,000, TND about 280, and general and administrative down about 125. Our change in net position just for the month of April, we projected to have a positive 133,000. And we ended the month with a negative 2.3 million. 2.5 million of that is in the electric side and about 2 million or 200,000 is on the water side. Our change in net position on a year-to-date basis, we projected to be about 3.1 million positive, and overall, we're about 5.6 million positive. 3.7 million of that is the electric side and 1.9 is on the water side. This just looks at our, kind of our 10-year trend. Our 2023 looks at our revenues of about 102 million overall versus our expenses about 98.3. So this includes both operating and non-operating expenses. And the next slide is our water, looking at the same time period where we show water about 16.3 million in revenues against 14.6 million in operating and non-operating expenses. So this slide is looking at our average daily collections. So for the month of April, we were collecting on average about 1.7 million a day. That's comparable, a little bit up from March's time period. And then a little bit up from 21 and 22 levels. That's mostly because probably the ERC is at a higher rate than in 21 and 22. And then our historical monthly cash comparison. So for the month of April, we had a drop in cash of about 2.4 million. So overall, year-to-date, we're at a negative 2.8 million so far. And then this takes a look at our cash position. So for the month of April, we're at 62 days of cash. In April of last year, we had 68 days. I will say that we do have a $5 million reimbursement that's with KDHE. We're pending reimbursement of that from a KDHE loan. And then this is just a historical graph of our days' cash on hand. And hanging around in the, in the 60 days for the last several months. And this graph just verifies in this particular month that our drop in our days' cash is also represents our change in cash of a negative amount. Sometimes it has gone in the other direction, but in the month of April, it's, both are going in a downward state. Some of our balance sheet items, so our fuel inventory was about 11.2 million. We still have our bond dollars from 2016C and 2020A. So about 725,000 in the 16C and about 815,000 in 2020A. On our capital spending, so through April, we have 83% of our capital remaining. We spent about 10.3 million so far. Electric spent about 6.3, water spent about 2.9, and then common, which is mostly our information technology area is about 1 million so far. So we, overall, our budget's about 60.5 million. So some of the projects there that have the major spend, so is our Fisher Underground Feeders, our annual underground and overhead activity. I think we're getting ready to finish up our burner, Neiman One Burner Coal Nozzle Replacement. And then water system improvement valves and leaks is about 1.3 million overall, and then we so far in this April through April, we spent about 716,000 on the Argentine tank. Our debt coverage for the month of April, we're at 2.82 times on a combined basis. 2.72 on the electric side and 2.20 on the water, and that's with pilot. The bottom table there represents our debt coverage without pilot. So we're at a combined 2.10 times with electric being two times and water being 1.72. Do you have any questions?
I, Lori, that last 5 million from the KDHE, that's the most recent one, right?
Yeah, we're still waiting for reimbursement of that. So we just submitted it.
Okay.
What was that, the 5 million reimbursement KDHE?
Right, and most of that, most of those dollars are from the Argentine tank that they've been working on. So we usually turn around times, a week, 10 days, we just had submitted it, so we'd already paid the bills associated with it.
Hey, Lori, on the, can we go back one slide, maybe? No, that's all right. Days' cash on hand, it looked like the 12-month rolling average of expenses is now 700 to 750,000. When did that increase from 500 to 550,000?
Um, I would say probably in '22 when our ERC, our fuel and purchased power costs had increased.
Do you, like, about what month, or, I mean, if you guessed?
I don't remember. I think our ERC was, I would say for majority of '22, I'd say early first, if not the first month in '22, it was within the early part of '22.
Okay, thank you.
See, no more questions. This is Jeff. I move to approve the April financials as presented. Bob, second.
Uh, the motion to approve the April financials has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley?
Hi.
Mylan?
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Groneman?
Hi.
That motion carries.
Can I make a motion just to approve January, February, and March 2023 as presented as one?
So actually, it's going to be the fourth quarter of '22, January month, February month, and first quarter of '23.
Those will be the ones. We already, yeah, we didn't approve March yet, right?
So first quarter is through March.
Yeah, but we'll have to also include January, February, March, and first quarter. Right?
That, right.
Can I do that as one motion?
You can. It's just that your vote would obviously be the same for each of those, so if anyone's going to vote differently, then it wouldn't work.
Hmm.
I think it will be fine.
This is Jeff. I move to approve the fourth quarter 2022, first quarter 2023, January 2023, March, February 2023, and March 2023 as presented previously.
That motion has been moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Haley?
Hi.
Mylan?
Hi.
Mulvaney Henry?
Hi.
Bryant?
Hi.
Gonzalez?
Hi.
Groneman?
Hi.
That motion carries.
See, all been audited.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next on the agenda, which is came out of our spring outage for Neiman, so I'll ask Glenn and his team that he's assembled behind him.
Yeah, you guys can just hang out here. So it's great to be back here, talk about this outage. It was probably one of the longer outages you'll see at Neiman. We did go a little bit long, and we can answer questions on that, but mainly related to supply chain and labor issues, but we'll talk about that a little bit later. It was about 15 days beyond what we originally planned. Uh, so my agenda tonight is for number one, have a safety topic. I want to update you guys on CT4, the capital transfer we did a couple of months ago and the results of that. And a little bit about E-Prod and where we're at as a generating unit. I'll have Chad Newbell present the capital work and Doug Bowen will do the expense work. Uh, next slide. So my little picture there is teamwork makes the dream work, right? So you got three guys that look competent. They've got vests. They're, they're doing a job. And obviously, there's a lot of violations there, but what I really like to concentrate on is the person walking by and looking. You know, as in management and as anybody walking around, you see bad behaviors, you need to look at it, correct it and modify it. So that poor lady right there was probably looking at those guys saying, I'm not going to have the courage to tell these guys they're doing the job the wrong way, but we have to do that. As time goes on, we'll get better at it, feel more comfortable in engaging our employees and letting them know, hey, let's stop the job, let's do it right. So as far as safety and year-to-date, we've had quite a few near misses, some involving lockout-tagout, and that really wasn't a lockout-tagout violation. It's just we needed to clarify the policy. We had a procedural violation, which we reviewed the standard operating procedure and retrained our employees. Housekeeping, we always have to reinforce housekeeping. Not only, it's not operator's job to clean everything, and it's not maintenance job to clean everything. It's everybody's job to do housekeeping. We had a mechanical failure of a vehicle. The ball joint busted while he was backing out. Got to do a better job of marking down these vehicle deficiencies and getting them done proactively. Uh, in the CDS, we were removing material that normally kicks on the walls and while they were removing that material, a large chunk fell off, hit the scaffold. We stopped that job and figure out a different way to get that work done. Uh, we had a contractor failure to properly secure his load and dropped a bunch of scaffold into some equipment. Not much damage happened because of the drop, but still, it's a near miss. We had a contractor suffer heat exhaustion, and we had a loss of power at the station that manifested or helped us discover we had a lockout-tagout issue on all the energy sources for our primary air dampers. So all those things, you want to fall forward, right? You want to learn from these things and do better next time. As far as injuries go, we had a slip, trip, and fall, employee stepping over a scaffold pole, injured his knee, and two repetitive motion injuries, one from sanding the right arm and one sore back from driving over uneven surface. During these outages, a lot of safety issues come up and we tried to address them immediately to mitigate, but some of them are longer-term solutions. So we had an issue in our by-product silo that was, the material wouldn't fall out. We had operators, I'll use a term Doug Bowen uses all the time, is poke it with a stick to motivate the material out. Uh, that was unacceptable, so we spent a lot of time and effort to make sure that that by-product silo unloaded without mechanical agitation or poking it with a stick. And we did a modification to our acid tank. Uh, one of these acid pumps require priming, and so you have employees with a bucket of acid. Well, it's a contained, it's not a bucket, uh, it's a cover or what do you call it, spout? But they're still climbing up a ladder with that bucket or spout of acid to prime the pump, so we modified that to keep them out of that activity. So next slide, please. So CT4, we asked for about $500,000. Sulzer was the awarded bidder based on their schedule conformance and price. So they arrived on site and immediately started disassembly. The work was complete by May 18th, and we submitted our testing plan. And the unit was actually in market by May 19th of this year. Uh, we had to do some seasonal tuning. That PSM tuning is what that was, May 25th to the 26th. And the unit has been on, Matt, you're back there, almost every day since, uh, since it's been returned to service. So that was a, a good spend for us to get that unit back and running well. Haven't had any lean-lean issues, no Knox events since doing that work. I think we got further to go with that unit as far as long-term planning and maybe having a spare set of nozzles, but uh, we did fix the immediate problem. Next slide, please. So Neiman came out of its outage. We synchronized June 3rd. Uh, there was a lot of work done, which these guys will cover. But we started our exciter commissioning. Uh, we had to do our NERC required testing. That's that mod 25, 26, and 27 testing. And you saw on the budget that we put new burners in the unit at this outage, and so we had to do our post outage commissioning and testing of those new nozzles. So we, that settled several iterations and mill configurations and load holds at certain areas, and we finally got through all that uh, by the 16th, and we returned it to market status on the 16th. Still have some issues we need to work out with 2-mill load, presently derated at a 2-mill, but 3-mill load, we're good to go, move around. Uh, days of coal on hand as we speak, probably 90. Uh, days of coal on hand as we speak, probably ninety seven days. Uh, received this year so far, three hundred and twenty-three thousand tons. Uh, part of our strategy, since we had that long outage and we haven't been called on to the buy with the market, is we have leased that train out to KBX and Arizona Public Power in January, February, and we let BP, uh, UP take it sometime in May for one load to Nevada. Uh, right now KBX is using that. That's the mine or the power plant in Oklahoma, so they all have it for twenty days. And then we're gonna park the cars and get the repairs done in August, so that'll give us some breathing room on our coal inventory, get more down to a reasonable target. CT two is ready for a start, running good. CT three had a failure of the, um, electric clutch for the fuel oil pump. Parts are hard to find. Uh, right now we're looking at eight weeks before that machine can return to service. And I, I'm not sure if you guys heard, we had a belt fire, uh, nearman yesterday morning. Um, operators responded, KC Fire Department responded. And, uh, you know, it was, uh, one of those things that happened with coal and storage is it gets hot and it starts combusting. Well, this got itself on the four belt, four A or B belt. I'm glad Dex here. So four B belt, uh, burned and so we were not able to put coal up to the unit. We immediately derated down to two mil minimum, but these guys worked all day and got the area cleaned, de-watered and reestablished for a belt. So, uh, good job by our team getting that back. So unit never came off due to this event and we're back at full load. Now turn it over.
Excuse me, can you go through the belt, belt systems down there and explain exactly a little bit more about what this belt, these belts are?
Yeah, so, uh, nearman was originally designed for two units, so you have redundancy. Um, so you've got an A and a B in most situations. Uh, so the train will come in, it'll bottom dump through the plow feeders. Plow feeders take it to number two belt, then it goes up to number three belt, out the telescopic chute lands on top of the pan feeders, the pan feeders feed that coal down to four A and four B belt. Those transport that coal to five belt. Five belt goes up to the crusher. Good, same. Again, that's nailing it. Uh, then it goes to six belt, six belt takes it up to the tripper, tripper puts it in all the silos. So that, that belt is redundant. Uh, but we spent quite a bit of money on fire protection. You'll notice you probably approved uh, oh, up to five million bucks for fire protection. Well, that paid dividends during this event, uh, because it limited the damage to just one belt and it could have been a lot more. So keeping that infrastructure up, taking care of those protection systems, those are critical for the ongoing operation of near.
Hey Glenn.
Yes.
How long? How long was that incident yesterday?
Oh God, I gotta call it. Six. So it actually started, the fire started about zero one thirty. Um, the, uh, deluge system discharged. Operators went down and inspected, didn't find anything. So we got to about five thirty and then the smoke started to generate. So that fire was in the pan feeder not visible to the human eye. So about five thirty, the decision was made to call nine one one, get the Kansas City, uh, fire, Kansas City, Kansas Fire Department onsite and then we reinitiated the deluge from the fire protection. So the, once you do that, you collect a bunch of water down in that tunnel. It's four stories below the ground. So we had, all the belts were covered in water, at least five belt was covered in water. We had to de-water all that and, uh, check the five belt for integrity before we could uh, start it up and then fi- uh, four A belt, which was the one, uh, that wasn't damaged. We had to check it because it was in a high heat environment and then they returned it to service about nine. This is the man that was there. He could speak to it better than I could.
Okay, thank you.
Till about nine, maybe fourteen, fifteen hours. We started picking coal up right about eight o'clock, seven thirty and. I'm gonna get out of your way. So anyway, Chad's next, um, but. So yeah, this is, this is the list of the capital projects that we did over the outage. Um, I'm not gonna talk through every one of them. I'll talk through the most notable ones for cost and scope of work. And those were the nearman generator and steam valves work. Um, the boiler burner replacement, or I think it's, I think in some of the budget books is called coal nozzle replacement. And the SCR catalyst. So the SCR catalyst was replacement in kind of replacement after uh, the SCR catalyst was, uh, the end of life, use of life was, was done. The burners were replaced because of erosion. So those are also replacement in kind. Uh, the SCR catalyst and the burners went smoothly, went fairly smoothly. Not too many big surprises. Um, as Glenn mentioned, the, the generator and valve work, there were some, some challenges there for sure. Um, first off was the, uh, um, supply chain issues. So we said we had some issues with parts, uh, as for schedule and costs. So the, uh, thankfully the schedule impacts from the parts, I think we were able to work around because the main issue in my opinion during that outage on that project was labor, as Glenn mentioned, was, you know, the contractor couldn't get enough skilled or not skilled, but experienced craft on site that are experienced worker to work on generators and valves of this nature. There was one large project at a local utility, not utility, not too far away, that was using up a lot of the craft, local craft. And there's a lot of projects across the nation. Apparently we're trying to get travelers in. We're trying to get anybody we could. Um, so it was just difficult to find experienced folks and, and that was the main reason for the issues we had with that project. Um, I don't, uh, that's about it for that. There was also the exciter, uh, the excitation or the the voltage regulator replacement. That went fairly smooth. We had some issues at startup and that one went, uh, pretty well after we got over that bump in the road. So, Glenn, is there anything else you think?
If you want the right answers, you might want to ask Chad. If you have any questions about the.
Sure, yeah, yeah. Any questions about the, any of those projects?
So like anything, when you go into these projects and these outage, there's gonna be some known things that you have to address and then there's gonna be some stuff that's gonna come up that you didn't quite know about. So what percentage, if you can, you know, kind of split that out, what percentage were things that came up unexpectedly?
Well, on, for instance, the burner replacement project, I would say that was probably a pretty low percentage. I'd say less than five percent. We had one issue with, um, you know, we're replacing some, um, diffuser plates in there as part of the scope of work and there were some areas where the clips we're using that were, they're not good welds or the welds have kind of failed over time. So that was some work, but it was not significant. Um, the generator and valve work, you know, that a lot of that cost, there was some, quite a bit of cost there, um, through change orders. There was a lot of work that we found as we opened it up, which often happens when you do this type of work, especially with something like that and everything's operating enclosed and you just, there's a lot of times you don't know what you're gonna find when you open it up. You know, I, I would say that's a, there's probably a pretty good level of cost there. Um, I don't have a good number for you, but, uh, I would say, I don't know.
Was it? Yeah, I did, I did. But that's, uh, was it higher than normal? Any normal outage? Cause a lot of the stuff you can't see, you have to open it up and then you're.
Last time you were in the generator was twelve years ago, so you had what's, what was called dusting where the end windings were up together and, you know, if you fail phase to phase there, you're, you're done. Yeah, so that was some of it. The end caps on the generator re-wedge, the end pieces, that was a little bit of an adder. I think most of it was valve restoration. I think that's where you had a lot of issues, right? Yeah, I tried to capture the stuff I learned from the previous outage and put it in the capital, like the reheat stop valve seat restoration and the generator re-wedge, you know, that was one that, that the contractor's been recommending. And, you know, we planned for it, budgeted for it, three heat stop valve, seat restoration. That was an instance where parts, um, supply chain got us. I mean, that one, I don't think there's, I don't even think there's anything we could have done regardless of the situation we're in with the supply chain, but that was like a forty weekly time. So that one, we're gonna have to plan for a budget to get the, the seat, the, the actual part of the flapper basically to get that purchased because we thought we could do a workaround during the outage, but you know, my opinion and the contractor's opinion was it just would not have been a, as good as, as a, it could have opened a can of worms for things. So, so that one, I think we, we did the best we could by doing what we traditionally have done and then we're gonna move that one down the road to do correctly. So um, but I would say, you know, I try to capture what I can in capital, the next outage. I, I would say it was pretty, the change, amount of change orders, the cost, the amount of stuff we found was normal. I think the costs have been higher just because of all the cost increases we're experiencing with everything, parts and labor. So I think the general, the amount of things we found were pretty normal, but the costs were higher just because of that. I think parts in general were much more expensive on the valves. I could see that cause we do valves every three years. I mean, there were some significant increases in parts just three years ago. So.
Chad?
Yeah.
Um, are you done?
Sorry.
Go ahead. Um, on the SCR catalyst, we replaced them. So on the ones that were replaced, the, how did the lifespan that we actually got compared to what was projected when we the last time that they were replaced?
Go for it. Go for it. Yes.
If you're gonna speak, you gotta step up.
Reactivity gets measured every outage, right? We'll pull a catalyst sample and see what the reactivity remaining is. I think you've got about two to three years extra life out of this catalyst than what's normally an industry standard. And so Wong has done a good job of managing that catalyst, measuring the reactivity. So over the, in the next budget, every two years we'll be replacing a layer. Um, first layer takes all the erosion. You know, you got all that fly ash tearing it apart and you lose reactivity due to material loss. And as you go lo- farther down in the layers, you get less of that. So yeah, it's, it's gone longer than a normal industry standard.
Good, thank you.
Uh, Mike, as I, I look at this, um, I, I'm, I'm literally looking for a number that's associated with this and I'm sure you guys don't have it tonight, but can we get that number? What all of this cost?
I have that number. Have that number in my head. Um, so from a total cost is about ten point six million.
Ten point six million for just this spring outage?
Yes. Expense and cap. Let's say the capital side was about three point nine and the remainder would have been expense. So a lot of things that fall on your expense side, like your turbine valves and all that restoration, not, not the reheat seat restoration, but all that other work falls under your expenses as opposed to being capitalized. Uh, I do have a cost rollup report that it's just not mature enough yet to give me an actual, but I think we'll be well under that number, but that's what our planned costs were. And those are estimates for every work order we did. I was gonna show the outage list, but that's just almost, I, I don't like looking at it anymore. So I don't think you would. So.
And, and you don't happen to also have in your head what the number was for the spring outage in twenty twenty-two? Do you? I know that you weren't in that position, but just wondered.
Wish I was that good. But no, I don't. I can get that. I, I didn't know.
If you, I mean, I would, I would like to know.
This, this is, this was a, a longer outage than that one, but yeah, I can find that number out.
Because the estimate to go back online for nearman this year was, was April twenty-sixth, right? I mean, I looked back at my notes from April fifth. That's why I have this notebook, so I can do that.
Maybe that's CT four. Uh, our, our date was, uh, twelve or something. May, May fifteenth was when we were gonna be back in the market. I'm giving a nod from Matt Klein, so I think I'm good. Uh, that's when we were supposed to be market or self-committed to start our commissioning and test. Yeah, this is what I consider a major outage. This is.
But I'm sorry, what was that?
This is what I consider a major outage, ones that come every six years or so. It was originally scheduled six. It went eight plus. Um, we gotta do a better job and knowing what the scope of work is. Um, so with Jeffrey Energy down and Thomas Hill down and all these other utilities right next to us are all using that same labor pool. It's hard to get those mill rights in and get the kind of labor response you want. So we'll have to think about those things going forward.
Thank you.
I think that covers capital. I'll get Doug to do the expense side.
Hey everyone, I'm Doug Bowen. I'm superintendent of maintenance out at nearman. Uh, so this is kind of the less, less glitzy portion of it. All the shiny stuff Chad got to do. Uh, if you'll go back just one slide to that capital, that, that very first one, I want to speak to replacing the seven A belt and bin pulley. So we talked, we spoke a little bit about the belts. Seven A had reached its, um, its lifetime. The, the belt is vulcanized together and the vulcanization was coming loose. There was no repair for it. I just want to, that belt resides approximately about a hundred and fifty-five, hundred and sixty foot up in the air. We had to set a, set the, the new belt, the new belt spool out on the ground, tape off an area and basically pull the new belt in while lowering the old belt down that full distance. And we got that done basically all in one day, very safely with no lost accidents. You know, we had a lot of people stop by and go, wow, that's, that turned out really good. So I wanted to bring that up. Uh, now we can go on to the next slide if you would please. Uh, some of the stuff up here is stuff we do, you know, every outage, cleaning the steam coils, basically air comes into the boiler. It has to be, the temperature has to be right. We can't take, you know, twenty degree air and introduce it into seven hundred degree air and not have problems. So we preheat the air as it's coming into the plant. It's just something we do every outage. Same way with boiler blasting and backpass blasting. What that is, is when we burn coal, we create a lot of fly ash and the fly ash gets clingy. It sticks to ductwork. It sticks in places. The best way that we found in, in, inside the boiler and inside ductwork there is controlled, small explosive charges that basically knock it down, bring it down to where it can be safely vacuumed out. We contract out with a known company that does it all over the world, actually. So that kind of, it takes a lot of the danger out of people going in there and using pickaxes and trying to knock it down. Uh, repaired the crusher dryer in the mill inlets. Uh, Wong, one of the engineers was here a couple, I don't know, maybe a year ago. And he had replaced inside the ball mills. We have mills that crush the coal, that pulverize the coal that we use for burning. He had replaced the liners inside these ball mills and that was great. It's got the ball mills back up into shape, but every bit of coal that comes into the ball mill, it has to come in through a ductwork and it has to leave through a ductwork. Um, that ductwork is fairly old and we continuously have, you know, issues with leaks, places that are worn. So we spent, basically we had about six people, seven people working continuously that whole six weeks that we had scheduled just inside the ductwork looking for bad places, places that were worn through or we thought that were gonna worn, wear through or places that were problematic that were causing, causing issues when the unit was online. Uh, it's very hard, very difficult to work on that stuff when it's online. We do do it, but it, it's a much safer, more controlled cold way to work on that. Um, the, the LPA screens, the LPA screens are, are just a screen in between the firebox or the furnace of the boiler. It's another, and the backpass of the boiler. It's another area that we just, every outage, we go in and we take a look at these screens because they're subject to, you know, high erosion with fly ash and heat. And we take a look and we proactively clean them and repair them so they don't ever get too far into a bad, you know, bad state of disrepair. Um, some of this stuff, the. Um, some of this stuff, the the boiler tube work and the replace eroded nineties. Uh, what that is, is that's just normal wear and tear, you know, of the boiler. Uh, it's high pressure steam or it's very hot water. It's stuff that when the mill, when the unit is off, we we take a chance or or take the time to to go in and. Repair all the uh, all the items that we really didn't want a chance working on while the unit was on, it was just better to. To delay that work and wait till an outage. The same, most of those, the HP and the LP, all those inspections, that's just something we do on a normal outage. The item replaced by product silo floor aeration tray fabric. We, what we have is when we create fly ash, we blow it over into a super silo and then we have to truck that out. Uh, fly ash actually flows like water, if it's, I know it seems like it's counterintuitive. But if you, if you take this fly ash and you introduce aeration air into the bottom of it. And then open a valve in the bottom of the silo, it'll it'll pour out like water, it's really amazing how fast it'll come out. We were having some issues getting uh, fly ash out of our silo into the trucks. We we took the time and and it was, it was a considerable expense, we had to. The silos by nature are flat bottom and they don't naturally empty out on their own, they're not a cone. So we had to open the doors, remove all the fly ash, and on the bottom of this silo floor are a bunch of air trays that provide lifting air. We had to visually inspect every one of those lifting trays and. Replace the fabric that covers them, air is introduced into the tray and it blows up through this fabric. We took that opportunity to replace all the fabric, so we don't have people, like Glenn says, one of my favorite sayings is in there poking it with a stick. Trying to, trying to get it out. We did, we also, uh, inside the plant in the ductwork that I was talking about that carries coal or it carries fly ash. We, from time to time, take opportunity to replace the expansion joints, you know, for every place where there's, you know, differential growth. There we go from one part of the plant to another, these expansion joint joints have a finite life. And we took that opportunity to get in and work on those. Uh, I think the the next one that I want to speak to is the incorporate the vibration trips. We've been working with our insurance company and introducing some of their recommendations that they have for our unit. And one of them was to introduce some some predefined set points for vibration to actually trip the unit. We had already had those programmed into our vibration to cause alarms and and to escalate the alarming for operator trip. But we are working on to make that an automated, you know, once it reaches the final state, it's gonna go ahead and trip. Uh, part of the older school was, you didn't want to rely on that information, you wanted to trust your operators. You know, now is it time to trip or is it not the time to trip, but we've decided that we're gonna, you know, implement what the insurance, uh. What what they suggested and and that'll help with that part of the insurance. Um, the control valve and actuator inspections and repairs, so if. Our valves throughout the plant, the control valves, if you can think of them, they're basically, if you've ever changed a cartridge out of your sink. Out of the valve, out of your sink, just the little cartridge that comes out and you put back in, that's on a, on a, you know, on a minor scale, that's kind of what we do. We go through, uh, we spend a lot of time to to line up with Chad's valve work in the turbines, so that work all kind of gets done. When he does valve work in the turbine, we do valve work in the plant process piping. And we actually did a little more extra work this time to start getting a baseline to. So we can have a a baseline and do some better predictive maintenance with equipment that we have to to maybe focus our efforts. On valves that we know are problems, that we probably needed to look at more often. And valves that, hey, we've never even had to touch those, why do we even spend time on them? Uh, the next item is that one B BFP, uh, motor reconditioning, that was a good catch. We had, um, we had, uh, it's, you know, one of our most critical assets. We periodically pull those out and send them out to a vendor and have the vendor go completely through them. We had been noticing some high vibration on one of our vibration PM routes on that, we took the time, pulled that motor out. We sent it off to our vendor and when he pulled the motor out. They noticed that the shaft that is attached to the rotor, the big, this is a five thousand horsepower motor, they noticed. When they pulled the shaft out, the shaft was becoming separated from the rotor, you know, would it have broke? Maybe, don't know, would it last for ten years, we we don't know, but. With us pulling that out and finding that crack in the shaft, we were able to, uh, in this long outage, we're able to. Have that shaft re-machined and stuck back in the rotor and the motor good to go, it's back in service and running right now. Um, I think we can go to the next slide, please. So you've seen, if you'll look through some of these, I've overskipped, I've skipped some of the DCS to PLC upgrades are. That's something that we've been working on over, you know, the last couple, three years. Uh, as a, as plants mature, we had different control systems throughout the plant, we had different vendors, different manufacturers. They all operate differently, we have been trying to get one control system, our ovation control system. A, it reduces, you know, spare parts, it reduces the different vendors we deal with. But more important than anything, it it keeps the control system and the way the system operates. In one platform that all the, all the maintenance personnel can understand, we don't have to train on a PLC, we don't have to play, train on it. Uh, DCS, we train for one platform and that, that's a big help. Uh, the other thing that we worked on, um. Is the replace the control room AQC metering. Uh, we at Nierman, we've been working with Matt's group at ECC, we're trying to streamline. Our reporting project, our reporting processes. Uh, so right now, the the way it was is we would have a big spreadsheet and we would all write numbers down like the old days, you know, in. In the line column notebook and we would write numbers down and we would call them and then they would write line numbers down and then they would enter it into a computer. We spent the time to upgrade our metering and put our metering in the SCADA and that way all the information is there. Uh, when they need it, ECC can reach out and pull the hourly reads, they know what the plant's running. It's, it's just one more thing that helps everyone communicate together better. And I think the lower slope tubes, we kind of spoke to that a little bit, um. It, we periodically choose an area in the boiler that we take and we do some ultrasound testing. We try to gauge how thick the tube, the tube is and see how much wears in it. Uh, we identified, I think about twenty seven tubes that we thought needed to come out. Cut out of the boiler and put back in while ongoing on, we did that at night while Chad's work was going on and during the day. We did that work at night so we could get those tubes replaced. I don't know that anything, uh, out there here that really, uh, really sticks out to me. The high energy piping, we do that on a regular basis, engineering takes care of that. They've got a plan in place where they know that this is where they need to go and and hit and look at to see if everything's okay. And. I think that's all I really have, I don't, the cooling tower, I don't know, I guess I'll speak to that last, when Glenn came. We had made a decision to get off the river or start, you know, get our, come, instead of being a once through. Just to go to a closed loop cooling, it's, it's turned out very well, eh, we don't have near the maintenance issues, we don't have to worry about the. The, um. Yeah, the, the river level or plugging and the cooling tower, you know, that was invested in many years, I came in oh four. So, you know, we, it's set there and it's turned out to be a very, very good deal in maintenance wise, which is what I'm really concerned about. We haven't had a lot of maintenance issues, you know, it, there's not a lot of moving parts and. We did have some, some damage that had happened during the very cold events. But it's not anything that's unknown operating on a cooling tower, it didn't, it didn't, you know. Yeah, I want to say stymie or prevent any output of production or anything, we were able to go through it and then we got to this outage and we went through and repaired it. That's really all I have, if you have any questions.
So Doug, same with, same with Chad, uh, what percentage on the expense side? Uh, that you faced that was kind of unexpected?
Uh, the the unexpected things, the that pop out to me, that that I'm gonna have to put some other things on the back holder. Uh, that is gonna be the control valves, we, we got into these, these are fish, they're Fisher control valves. They're, they're very expensive and you can only get them from Fisher, there's not like you can. If it, if it needs a new cartridge, if you will, or part of a car, you can't, you can't just say, I'm gonna put another vendors in there, it's not possible. We, we went over on that quite a little, we went over on that prediction project, probably. Probably right at double, you know, we missed, we missed it by half. Um, and then the other ununknown expense that we had was the boiler feed pump. That item, that item was unexpected, we pulled it apart, you know, we were expecting in a thirty grand. That's what it normally is to pull it out and get it out, that is gonna be up in probably a double another again. Other than that, everything else was pretty much spot on, we didn't really have any great big.
Doug? So mine's not so much a question as as a comment, so while the acrobatic uh, replacement of the. The seven belt, sounds interesting, I actually would have liked to. Heard, I guess, instead of seeing the controlled explosions.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's not as exciting as as you think it is, but but it is, if you want, if I can give you, they take, they bring dynamite out. It's in a box, just like Wile E. Coyote and they set it out and they go, well, I'm gonna use a half stick and they take a knife and they break it. They put their charge on it and then they put it on a hot, you know, hot sticks, if you're extendable sticks, they put them on hot sticks and they just reach it where they want to go. And they push a button and it goes off and it's, it sounds exciting, but it's, it's not, but it's very effective way to clean quickly. With minimal, with minimal danger, I should say. Right, anything else?
Well, one thing you may consider based on what Jeff's just said, uh. You know, where you find opportunity in the future, though you may have a few. Uh, still photos that you add to your presentation or short little video or something that may, uh.
I don't know if you can show it, blowing it up.
I, I can get those and I have your email address, I can probably give you this if you really want it, it's, I can get that done. I do have pictures of that seven belt because.
I'd like that.
It 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 was kind of quite of a feat, especially, we did it with four, the contractors had four people on site. We taped it all off, I'm just glad it worked out well.
Alright.
Anything else?
Any other questions? Thank you. Glenn, I'm glad you you covered the fire, because I was gonna ask you that, I I ran through the PowerPoint, I didn't make note of that, but you've already addressed it, so appreciate you bringing it up.
More details to come on that, so, yeah, we gotta do our investigation.
Yep, yep. Alright, moving on to miscellaneous, uh. Comments, I will, uh, first start out by. Then, at the last board meeting, we had a visitor. That had asked a question about. About revenue and kind of misquoted, misunderstood part of what Laurie's presentation was, uh. In fact, she asked a question around. Why do, why, uh, have our income gone up? Since, uh. About one point nine billion dollar increase is. Being presented, so, and then she did say that, this is CC make, you know, talking about, she did say that, uh. She would follow up, send me an email and then she did. Uh, she asked a question, she had two screenshots, basically what she was not understanding was, uh. Was, uh. There's two graphs, one was the build CCF, which she had, she had circled for twenty twenty two. And she also had made note of this one point nine billion, it's been the year twenty twenty two, the bill KWH. Year to date and, uh, which does not indicate any type of financial. Uh, revenue, income or anything like that, so I did follow, I did send her an email back and just told her, this is just bas- basically customer usage on. Water units, electric units and did not represent, uh, anything, uh, certainly. Our revenue comes from this, but it's not an indication of what our revenue is and not an indication of what our income is, so I didn't want to report that back. I think I copied the board on my response to her. Uh, July thirteen, Rose, I know you've already addressed this, I will be sending out a calendar invite to the board, that way you'll have it all in your calendars. Uh, again, it's, if nothing changes, what I was told, it will be these, a special meeting on the field floor at five o'clock on the thirteenth, so. Uh, I'll also, in my email, ask for. A couple of items, uh, county administrator and the mayor is asked to put together an agenda. Uh, so that the meeting, uh, specifically focused on those agenda items and those items only. So I'm asking tonight and I'll ask tomorrow in an email if we can. If you guys can agree on what those two or three items will be, I know one would be removing charges from the bill. Uh, so I've already communicated that, but if there's anything else pressing that you have in mind, you can communicate, uh, individually back to me. I'll look through all of that and compile it and then make sure we move forward with getting that over to the unified government and. They had said the same thing about the one to the commissioners to make sure that they're specific as to anything the commission commissioners want to address. Not to go on the agenda as well. Uh, community engagement group. Communication has gone out, we reported on that, we are starting to get some response back, it's, uh, still early in the process, so. I'll keep you abreast of of anything that I that I hear about, uh. Those applications are being sent back, Patricia's collecting and gathering them and, uh, and then she did send me a report today, but, uh, it's still early in the process, so. Next, I'll ask Laurie to come back up. She's got two things she wants to report on, uh. I think you may have seen one with the rating agencies, so Laurie, I won't say anything else, I'll just, I'll stay your thunder.
So, um, I had sent to you. Um, the rating review from Moody's investors. So each year our credit rating, each of the three credit rating agencies, they perform an annual credit review of our utility. So Moody's, uh, was the most recent one. Um, and what that review consists of, it's requesting information, usually, you know, financial information for the most part. But they also ask about our production and operational activity as well as any, uh, kind of updates to our community environment. Um, we provide our quarterly financials to each of the rating agencies and also our annual report. Um, so that they can stay up to date with our financial metrics, so. Typically, we have a conference call with the credit analyst and at some point, sometimes, uh, you know, when there's a lot going on. We bring in our operational guys, uh, along with the financial team. And have a call, this time we just had it with the financial side of it, of the house, um. And, uh, so we provided our update, um. With them, so. After we get, after we provide the information, uh, the analyst takes it back to their committee. And they present it to the committee and then the committee, uh, prepares a rating, uh, for us, so. After we've gone through that process, Moody's, uh, reaffirmed our credit rating of A two and a stable outlook. Um, some of the areas they identified in the review, the rating are that identified that we had a diverse resource mix. And that our rates do remain competitive within our regional peers. Um, they expressed that the felt like the utility to be able to manage, um, additional debt for our capital improvement. Based on our, uh, coverage levels. Um, they did see, uh, positive of our proposed target to reach a hundred and twenty days of cash on hand. And also our reserve proposal for ERC. They did identify that maintaining rate affordability is important to our credit profile. Um, and that they feel like our risk is mitigated with our cost recovery mechanisms that we have in place, which is our energy rate component and our environmental surcharge. Um, they look at our customer base and they noted that, you know, our customers are mainly residential, but it only accounts for about thirty percent of our revenues. Um, and did uh identify that our overall customer base has a modest dependence on our industrial and commercial base. So uh, they expressed that the rating reflects continued sound uh financial performance. So um, overall, you know, maintaining our credit rating is important. Um, and it's positive even when we're not in the bond market. Um, they seem to have over the last several years, um, you know, reach out on an annual basis. We used to just have credit ratings whenever we went out for the bonds, but now they're they look at um our performance um on a more frequent basis. So felt like it was a good review and to be able to maintain our rating and a stable outlook was positive. Seeing questions? I think we're we're uh coming up. Fitch is our next one that's coming up here in the next couple weeks.
And that one was with who again?
This was with Moody's investors.
So yeah, some of one other item.
Another item. So slab of marble. So each year, um, and I I talked to you about, you know, submitting our annual report uh to the um govern- government finance officers association, GFOA uh for the certificate of achievement in financial reporting. Um, so our requirement is for us to publish an easily readable and efficiently organized annual financial report that provides transparency and full disclosure. Uh, the report must satisfy both generally accepted accounting principles as well as applicable legal requirements. Um, the grading consists of fifteen categories. Um, some of the categories include contents in our introductory section, the management dis- uh discussion and analysis, our financial statements, cash flow statement, um, as well as our note disclosures and some required supplementary information and a statistical section. Um, the annual comprehensive financial reports judged by an impartial panel uh at the GFOA um organization and it's uh to meet the high standards of the program, it includes demonstrating a constructive spirit of full disclosure uh to clearly communicate our financial story and motivate potential users and user groups to read the report. That's always a difficult part. So but the certificate of achievement is the highest form of recognition in the area of governmental accounting and financial reporting. And its attainment represents a significant accomplishment by the entity and its management. So it takes a number of my staff and others in the utility to get us through an annual audit and ultimately produce the annual comprehensive financial report. So I would like to thank my staff uh and others that participate in our audit for their efforts with the audit and putting it the report together. So so I'm pleased to announce that uh BPU has received the twenty twenty one annual comprehensive financial report and has been awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting. And this is our thirty forty first consecutive year. So so we finally filled out this this slab of marble. So I'm expecting to get a new slab starting uh the twenty two audit. So questions? Questions? Yeah, thank you.
Right, Madam President, I'm going to turn it back over you. That that completes uh our section of the agenda. So we're ready for board comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, Mr. Haley, you have comments this evening?
Yeah, thank you, uh, Madam Board President. I'm exceptionally, exceptionally proud and as I know we all are and congratulations. Uh, Laurie Austin, thank you for the presentation too, but congratulations on the award. Um, also appreciate the review that was given. Um, learned some things tonight uh that I didn't know. I hope there's not going to be a test, gentlemen, uh, but I certainly, yeah, certainly appreciate the review that we had uh tonight by both as well as the audit. A couple of quick things that I I do want to visit about. Um, I do appreciate that we had our hearing last week um on the um, the um, which we look forward to for the next meeting uh regarding the rate increase. I've heard from a few people since then, um, pros and cons, and certainly look forward to a further evaluation there. I would like to reiterate my um uh request to find out what a moratorium might do on disconnects as we go into a warmer summer. Um, based on what we did with the cold weather, uh disconnect the suspension of that. Then we talked about that, I think a couple of weeks ago at the meeting and would still kind of like to find out what an impact or effect that it had with the moratorium comparatively speaking. Um, let's see, what else did I want? Oh, yes. Um, I certainly want to say that I'm impressed with the shortened time for customer services response. You know, I don't know how many uh of the board members here, but I I get a few calls. Um, okay, two today. And I I want to say that the shortened time for the response and resolution for customer issues eases some of my angst of there being no direct access through the lobby, uh, which I would like there to be a personal uh time, but um I don't want to single out anybody in customer service, but I certainly have to say I've heard a couple of times how appreciative Meghan uh it has been in her response, response time to share with you or your staff that she uh has swiftly brought some resolutions and some concerns that that have come to my attention. And finally, um, the other uh issue, it just kind of went out of my mind, but um oh, the use of some of our properties as we look at how we square this circle on four sides, we are concerned with what our bottom line is, but um and I hope we can uh without too much of a um an increase um through our water and our electric. But the utilization of some of our dormant properties um and some of our land um that we might try and look at leasing or maybe even selling or reutilization of that, if that might be something we could um consider as well. So uh, again, appreciate appreciate the information that came tonight and um we did have an issue with the policy and I'm finally, really, I'm so glad to hear that we will be sitting down to discuss some of the policy concerns. Um, I continue to hope to see that we will be able to split ourselves away, the BPU away from the UG charges, which are certainly so onerous in and of themselves and that that discussion will be a part of what we share with uh General Manager Johnson as to um how we can do that, certainly as we look at the commissioners that are are there and those that will come up, that they will help us to um uh divide ourselves from that and that we find out how we bill and how we collect on behalf of the UG those taxes. Uh, there was a concern about a connectivity policy for non-US citizens that came up. I hope that that was resolved. I understand that citizens of one country of Mexico do have a means by which they can still make application and be um connected here at the BPU. But that certainly that um is not, that's because of something with the embassy. But there are other citizens from other countries that without, who don't have USID who um go through some difficulty, if not impossibility, to become um ratepayers or become um uh connected with the utility. So anyway, just several issues out there and I hope we can find resolution again on what disco, disconnection through cold weather rule would mean as we look toward that policy as requested uh for a moratorium on summer um summer disconnections as well. Thank you for your indulgence, Madam President, members.
Thank you, Mr. Haley. Mr. Mylan? Do you have any comments this evening?
Well, I have a brief comments. First of all, I would like to thank the staff for their presentation. I as usual, the presentation for the job you do well. Appreciate that. My other comment is I want to thank the staff for the presentation that you present yourself very well for that rating last week. You may be complimented for outstanding job to support your position while we need to have an increase as presented. With that, I'm also happy to have received report from the Moody's running company, which states really that we are having A two ready. So I won't go into detail about that. I'm happy to see that our financial house is in order. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Mylan. This is just so we can, um, I guess word of my comments. Um, okay, so a couple of things for me. Obviously, um, Laurie, congratulations on, I don't know, you said thirty fourth year, did you say? Forty, sorry.
Forty first.
I was up a really long time yesterday. My apologies. Um, forty first year. Congratulations on that. That is well deserved, obviously. Um, gentlemen, the presentation, I uh I'll say it was at least fifty percent over my head. I'll be honest about that. Uh, but uh, it is, it is important for this board to be able to put uh that activity with the kind of numbers, right, that, which is why I asked, what did that cost this utility? Uh, it's important for this board to know that and connect the two. Um, but thank you all for for that presentation um this evening. I I do want to remind the other board members, um, Bill mentioned that the community engagement committee uh application process for community ambassadors is open. And so to the extent that board members have um suggestions for folks in the community who could serve on the steering community committee, if you all could get those to Angela, please, um, as quickly as you can, that would be appreciated. Um, the I I did attend um from Saturday uh until yesterday, the uh APPA National Conference, which um I'm in my uh last year of of my initial term here on the board. And that is the first time I have attended um one of our conferences uh by one of, by either APPA or AWWA. And I will say that I have attended many conferences um over my career. And I did share this with Bill, that the content of this conference was um was of the best I've ever seen. And um so many, many kudos to APPA for putting on such a professional conference. Um, and Mary asked me on the front end tonight, she said, hey, how did the, how'd the governance section go for you? And I said, well, Mary, I didn't attend the governance section like I was supposed to because not a rule follower sometimes. Uh, no, actually, I I told Chris on the front end, I wanted to attend something else in the morning. And what I attended um was a a session, a three and a half hour session called Power Up Your Financial Policies. And um, that is a presentation. It could not have been more timely given the um rate process we are in right now. But uh, I am going to ask Chris to download that particular presentation and present to the rest of the board um for your review. Um, I think I think it's important information um for y'all to have. And they actually had um members of the bond rating agencies there as well that uh presented on really what their process is and how they evaluate public power utilities, which was also very interesting. Um, so uh enough said about that, but I I appreciate the board's indulgence for letting me to go uh to that particular conference this year. Um, I think la- last thing I have is um and I, Angela will tell me no doubt if this is not the appropriate forum, but um I would like to ask this board, um, the July fifth meeting is is scheduled, obviously. And I would like the only topic on that board meeting to be um discussion of uh I guess the rate hearing, if that's possible. So I if if you guys are okay with that, I would like that to be the case. General Manager, I don't know if you're okay with that, but
Could you repeat it?
Yeah, I want the only topic on the on the July fifth meeting to be
Yes, I got it.
Just just that. That process.
Pardon? And public comments.
Absolutely, public comments. Yes, of course. Thank you, Jeff. I appreciate that clarification. Uh, that's all I have this evening. Mr. Bryant, over to you.
Um, Laurie, Lynn, Chad, Doug, thanks for the informative presentations this evening. I'm I just enjoy hearing about the work that's being done in all departments. Um, I'd like to thank everyone who attended the recent rate hearing. It was educational listening to all sides of the conversation. I want to thank staff who were supplying me with a copy of all the public comments from day one as I had to leave early due to a early morning meeting on the following day. Fortunately, I was able to audit day two uh online, so that helped. Uh, I do look forward to reviewing all the evidence that was presented across both days. Thank you.
Mrs. Gonzalez?
Um, Mr. Johnson has already touched on um the the comment that I want to make and um did a little bit better than I'm probably going to, but um just like to state that I'm I'm usually a pretty good listener. Uh, take to heart complaints um that citizens have and and that we've heard over the last year plus meeting. Um, I try not to be reactionary and I try to look for results or solutions when people uh bring their um their problems forward. But I really can't not comment on a statement from the June seventh meeting that questioned um part of our financial report. And the question asserted that the report listed billions, one point two billion of dollars and even used the term that we were cooking the books uh in regard to this question and this number. Uh, the page on the report that she was viewing and questioning was not dollars, but usage of water and power, KWH and CCFs. And it was clearly labeled on the top of the page that's what it was um on the financial report. So I would like to ask people before uh they misspeak or use accusatory language or derogatory remarks that they're sure that they have their facts straight. And I also am bringing this forward because I want my comments to be on record tonight. Um, I'd like to also publicly thank Commissioner Stites for attending our uh rate hearing last week. Um, the only commissioner from the unified government that was here. I I know he learned a lot, hopefully, as um many of the people listening did. Um, also like to thank our presenters tonight. Um, I always tell everybody that I have a BA so I could skip a lot of the science and math. And so I appreciate when um all this is brought to my attention and I try as hard as I can to understand all of it. Um, but I think Rose said you've got fifty percent. I'm I might have been less, less than that, but I do appreciate the update on that um tonight as well. Um, Laurie, congratulations forty one times. That's my remarks.
Thank you. Mr. Groneman?
Uh, yes, I just like to uh uh my only comment is that I'm on the mend and barring any setbacks, I look forward to uh being at the July meeting in person and uh and partaking in the in the meeting. So that's all I, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Groneman.
This is Jeff. I move to adjourn.
This is Mary. I second.
Motion's been moved in second and roll call, please.
Roll call Haley.
Hi.
Mylan.
Hi.
Moveney Henry.
Hi.
Bryant.
Hi.
Gonzalez.
Hi.
Groneman.
Hi.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.